We worship you.
We hail you.
We worship you.
We hail you, we hail you, we hail you.
We worship you. We worship you. We hail you most high.
We hail you, we hail you, we hail you.
We hail you. We worship you. We hail you most high.
We hail you, we hail you.
And we hail you.
We worship you.
We hail you most high.
We hail you, we hail you.
We hail you.
We worship you.
We hail you most high. We hail you. We worship you. We hail you most high. We hail you. We worship you. And we hail you most high. We hail you. We worship you. We hail you most high. We hail you. We worship you. We worship you. We hail you most high. Rakapaya nesataya. We hail you. We worship you. We hail you most high. We just wanna worship God in this place. We wanna invite the Holy Spirit in this place. We wanna worship our master in this place. We just wanna give him glory and honor. Eka paya nesana ya ne ya ne ya. Eda bayan oshetana maya neka payan osha. Eka na esana. Ola bayan oka ya nesataya ne ya. E ra ka payan oshetaya neka. Ra bayan oshetaya. We just wanna welcome the Holy Spirit in this place. For his atmosphere is already amongst us. Wherever you are, distance is never a barrier. We just wanna worship God. We just wanna lift up our sound of worship. As we worship God in this place, begin uttering words of love unto God. For he is ready to hear your voice. For he is ready to hear your voice. For he is ready to hear your voice. Become a baby to God. Become a child to God. For he is ready to hear your voice. E ra bayan oshetaya neka ya nesana ya ne ya. E ra bayan oshetaya ne. I am here as your child, Lord. Ka ra bayan oshetaya neka paya. Oh yes, Jesus. Oh ra bayan oka ya na. We give you glory. Oh yes, Jesus. Take all the glory. All the glory. Almighty God. Take all the glory. All the glory. All. Love for your faithfulness.
For your faithfulness.
The power. And your love. Take all that glory. All that glory. All. Love for your faithfulness. Faithfulness and the power. And your love. Take all that glory. All that glory. All. Love for your faithfulness. E ra bayan oka ya nesataya. The power. Eka ya nesate. Take all that glory. All that glory. All that glory. I'll take all, take all.
Take all.
Eka payan nesatan. All that glory. Almighty God. Take all that glory. All that glory.
All that glory.
Eka paya. I'll take all, take all.
Take all that glory.
All that glory.
All that glory.
All that glory. Eka payan nesate.
Take all that glory.
Ora da bayan nesana. Eka. Love for your faithfulness. E ra bayan neka sataya nesataya. Your power.
Power and your love.
I'll take all. Lift up your sound of worship. E ra bayan oshetaya. Love for your faithfulness. Ah, ra da bayan oshetaya neka ya. The power.
The power and your love.
Take all that glory. All that glory. All that glory. Love for your faithfulness. He has always been faithful unto us. Your power. And your love. Take all that glory. We just wanna lift it up one more time. Hey, ra da bayan. Love for your faithfulness. Through every situation, he has always come through. The power. Your love. Take all. Allow him to take control over you. E ra bayan oshetaya. I'll take all, take all.
Take all that glory.
All the glory. All the power. Just lift up your sound of worship. Somebody in every situation, he has always been faithful unto us. Oh. Take all, take all.
Take all your glory, my God.
All the glory. All the power. Lift up your sound of worship. Rakapaya nesatan. E ra ka payan oshetana. Rakapaya nesatan. We give you glory, Almighty God, in this place. For you have always been faithful unto us. We might not know what we do on a daily basis. But because of your love and your gratefulness. Because of your power, you carry us through. Ora da bayan oshetana. We know that without you, we are failures. We know that without you, we are nothing. We know that without you, we can never join. You are the reason why we are alive. We give you glory. Ah, ra da bayan neka ya na. E ra da bayan oshetana. Ariyana bayan neka sataya. Oda go to man. We are the God. Oriya cha deka ro de. Almighty God. The Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We are saving our ground before you, oh Jesus Christ. We are saving everything before you, Almighty God.
We live your name on high.
We live your name on high. Abba Bada. The mighty Savior.
We live your name on high.
We live your name on high. Abba Bada. The mighty Savior. Take your glory as we lift your name. Your name. The name is the power we preach. Abba Bada. Abba Bada. Your name on high. Abba Bada. The mighty Savior. Ora da bayan nesana. No, we are the God. We live your name on high. Oh, we are the God. Abba Bada. The mighty Savior. I wait for you tonight. Abba Bada. The mighty Savior. Abba Bada. The mighty Savior. We are lifting your name forth. We are praying your name. Take all that glory. We are praying your name. Take all that glory. There is no other God like you. We lift your name forth. But you have the beginning and the end. You are the beginning. Where our nations are being built. When we are preparing for the future. Let me pray. We are the people. We are the people. We are the people. We are the people. We lift your name forth. And you are the people. There is no other God like you. We lift your name forth. You have the beginning and the end. You are the beginning. There is no other God like you. You have the beginning of your name. Every move about your name. In every order, confesses that you are the God. You are the God. You are the God. You are the God. There is no other God like you. You are the God. We are the people. That is the same way that it is with the children of Israel. God, that is two ways in one. The God of morality provides us. Our mother is the holy or leader. The order is the same. The children of God. The order, that monster from the beginning and now. With order, that will find us. That is the time of God. Abba Bada. That is the way we live. That is why we call you. That is why we worship you. You are the God of people. You are the God of people. The God of people. You are the God. Ra da bayan oka ya nesana. We are the people. I'm the God. I'm the God. I'm the God. Let your life shine upon us. Let your light shine upon your children. In the name of Jesus Christ. Lord, we thank you, oh God. We worship you, Almighty God. In Jesus' name we thank you.
This is yet another day. A wonderful one overall. In which the Lord has blessed us. And with a divine day. A day in which we are continuing to submit our supplications, to submit our prayers unto the Lord. For a reason and for a purpose. In the name of Jesus. Amen. I greet you all in the name of Jesus. As we are broadcasting live from GM Pretoria. Thus at number 225 Old Street. Um, we are here not for anything else. But to connect in prayer. In this series number 12 of GM Prayer Network. Tonight, we are blessed. The house is full with mighty women of valor. Servants that are called for most high. They are here to lead us in prayer tonight. Myself is Pastor Michael. Taking us through this series. Knowing that God has got a purpose. God has got a reason. Tonight, we are blessed in this edition. I have got three women of God in the house. In my immediate right, I've got none other than my fifty elder in the house. Um, I'll give you the honors to introduce yourself.
Good evening, children of God. I hope all is well in your homes. Thank you for connecting with us. And I believe that the Lord has got something for you this evening. Uh, stay connected. And as we are continuing with the series as Citizen this week, we are looking at the rising of the inner man. I hope we are together, we are all rising. Let us all arise and shine. For the glory of the Lord has risen. In Jesus' name. My name is Mama Shumba. Pastor Lindaway Shumba. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mama. You are welcome to this wonderful season and wonderful session. On my far right, there are two beautiful ladies there. I will start with the rich auntie. Please, can you introduce yourself?
Good evening, people of God. I welcome you to today's JPN, um, session. And I also want to introduce myself. My name is Pastor Eliza. And I welcome you to today's session. Stay connected. I believe God is going to change your life. He's going to touch your families. He's going to bring something new as we are working in the inner man. Hallelujah. And we are also killing, um, the desires of the flesh. Thank you so much.
Amen. I believe for sure, we will never remain the same. On the farthest right, God, none other than another minister. Minister that we minister with here in GM Pretoria. Welcome. And please, can you introduce yourself?
Good evening, viewers online. I'm Minister Anonsa Chikwana. We are here for the prayer session, JPN. Tonight is your night. We are here to build and to destroy others. We are here for prayer. Be connected and be connected tonight. Tonight is your night. Amen.
Hallelujah. We are so blessed, as you have heard. These women have got serious packages. But before we go so, so, so deep, we were given a scripture today to read, which is found in Psalms chapter number 127. But I'm not gonna open that one. Let us open in Luke chapter number 2, verse number 52. That's the last verse in Luke chapter 2. Luke chapter 2, verse number 52. In New King James, it reads, "And Jesus increased in wisdom, in stature, in favor with God and in favor with men." Today, the theme for today is God. Increase me. Make me bigger. Amen. Make me bigger. Make me bigger. This evening, as we are starting in these elementary stages of the session, this is the time where we need the theme to sink into our hearts, to sink into our minds. So that when we say, our father taught us last of last week, that when we are talking to God, we worship. When we are addressing the devil, we say, we command. We don't joke. So for us to be able to do that, we must be waxed in the spirit. We must be waxed in the wisdom. We must be waxed in everything. So when God is building things, he builds it to a purpose. And he doesn't start building and leave it on the way. He builds it until it comes out. Then it becomes in favor of both God and man. As Christians, we have traveled in favor of men, but without the favor of God. Some have traveled in the favor of God, without the favor of the people that are around us. You are a prayer warrior. You are everything. But you have got nothing to show for that. There is nothing that people can admire from your God. So tonight is your night. Mama Shumba, over to you as you take us through.
Hallelujah. We thank God for his word. God and his word are one. I think my pastor here is clearly saying it that we need the favor of God and we also need the favor of men. How is it possible without the spirit of the Lord in us? As we are still talking about the rising of the inner man, in the week, um, my pastor, I was reminded of, uh, of Mary. You know, Mary was told, uh, that she was going to give birth to a child. And she had known no man. And her, her fiance, Joseph, was actually shocked and was planning secretly to separate with Mary. But now, the angel of the Lord visited Joseph and told him that, no, this is of the Lord. Take her and go somewhere. So even as I was thinking about Mary, many a times, we talk about Mary and only what we see is that he brought Jesus and she brought Jesus to life. She gave birth to Jesus. But there is more to it. And I'm thinking, what kind of a spirit was inside Mary at that time? Because she faced ridicule. Imagine you have never met with a man and then you are pregnant all of a sudden. I could imagine even the relatives were looking at it and they were saying, what's wrong with this girl? She is quite a fancy and she's almost getting married, but now she's pregnant. Amen. And then, the truth of the matter is, the angels was speaking to her. God was speaking to her. And I don't think there is going to be a way in which God was going to be able to. So what I'm trying to say here today is, the reason why we need to prioritize and see how important the inner man is, it is because there is no way in which God can communicate with us without the inner man. Most of the errors that you are making, we are making them because the inner man that is inside of us is too small, is too tiny, it's unrecognizable. There is a buckle, if ever there is a buckle, I don't think, at times we talk about the devil, we say devil that, devil that. And at times we pray and we say, uh, the weapon fashion that gets us may shall not prevail, but yet we add our own weapons to our own self. The inner man that is in us is too small to prevail. There is a serious back up between the flesh and the spirit. What you are feeding is what is going to win. What are you feeding today? You are feeding your flesh with the food that you eat so much drat honestly, and you are feeding your flesh with pornography. You are feeding your flesh with all the social media and all the entertainment that you're finding on social media. But what are you doing to your inner man? Even when the witches are visiting you in the night, what do they find? They only see the, 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 the flesh. The spirit is tiny and is trying to scream and tell you, no man, there's a witch here. You can't even hear, because you have made the flesh to rise up against the spirit man. But if you have the spirit man, you realize that there is no situation that can come to your life without God speaking to you, without God giving you the direction. We need to rise up tonight. If ever there is anything that we need to fight for, is the rising up of the inner man. This is the message that we have today. Let your inner man arise. How does your inner man arise? Feed your inner man more than you can feed the physical. Feed your inner man to a level that you are able to hear the voice of God when he speaks to you. Feed your inner man to an extent, to an extent that you are able even to, to, to see and design, to see through situations, even when they come. You can, you can see even the negative things. It's not everything that is negative that is coming from the devil. Even in the negative things, God is knocking at your door, is saying something. How do you know unless you have an inner man that is upright and strong? This is the message that we have today. We want the rising up of the inner man. Amen.
Oh yes, this is so profound. This is so profound. Pastor Eliza, can you take us through your prayer here? Because we need this inner man to grow. We need this inner man to rise. We need this inner man to be waxed in favor of God and the surrounding as well. We need this inner man to be recognized. We need this inner man. Please, madam, take us through a prayer.
Oh yes, um, you know, to me, when Pastor Lindy started explaining about Mary, I realized that, oh yes, most of us, we work, we, we don't really carry it or we have the smallest, uh, spiritual inner man that is strong. It's not that strong, but we desire more. We desire more of the flesh, but we are not working on our inner self. This also, I realized when I look in Galatians 5, verse 24, when it says, "And those who belong to Christ Jesus have crucified the flesh and the flesh with its passions and desires." So it's only when you walk with God, and when you walk with God, you already have the fear of God, which, which was, uh, Mary was having. Imagine Mary, the fact that she was not married, she never slept with Joseph. But when the angel spoke to her that you are going to carry the Messiah, she believed it, she didn't negotiate, which means she knew that the Jesus that is in me, the God that is still in me, would do something, would know when and how and where I'm supposed to be. So this is something that if our fleshly being are, are being killed and we build more in the inner man, we, we build more in ourself, in our spiritual life, everything that is surrounding us will become easier. Everything that we'll be thinking of, because as, as, as the Bible says that, just seek unto me, seek the kingdom of God first, and everything around it shall be added unto you. And we see people, even we see online people, they are having a lot of problems. They are not seeking God first. They are seeking the fleshly things that can, you can wake up, tomorrow you are dead. And what did you build before? What do you have before? And that's what we are seeing with a lot of Christians. When they hear about delivering, they gathered, but when they hear about building yourself with God, having intimacy with God, developing your spiritual being, building yourself in the spirit, you hear a few people desiring that. Even if you check now, we see that our numbers, they've been decreased, even the viewership. What, what is because of that? Because there's no declaration. We are speaking of things that is more valuable than what they think. So today, I want to speak to somebody that whatever that you want is there already, but seek more the kingdom of God. Wake on your inner man, wake on your spiritual being, because this journey, after all, these years that we are chasing about money, we are chasing about children, we are chasing about businesses, we are chasing about relationships, we are chasing about marriages, it's going to last not so much, but the internal life is going to last more. But how do you live internal life? It's when you wake on your inner man. It's when you wake on your spiritual, you, you being as a spiritual person than only a flesh being. So today, as we are continuing with the flesh, with the killing of the flesh and building the inner man, let's go back to our old self and ask ourselves, what does God want me to do? Where do God want me to be than what I want? Let what, let what God wants you to be is what you are going to desire. And let every need that you think of be of God's needs. Hallelujah.
Oh yes, this is so profound. This is so profound. As we are building up, as we are building up in this session tonight.
Amen.
As soon as we are done with this building up, when we rise up, we must rise up with power. We must rise up with vigor.
Oh yes.
With energy.
Yes.
Attacking.
Oh Jesus.
Okay, let's go to Psalm chapter number 127, verse number 5. Uh, let's take verse 4 and 5. Verse 4 and 5. I know Father is gonna speak of verse 1, babe, so I just want to hijack a portion here. "As arrows are in the hand of a mighty man, so are children of his youth." Verse 5. "Happy is a man that hath his quiver full of them." What is them? Arrows. What are arrows? Sons of the youth, right? "They shall not be ashamed, but they shall speak with his enemy at the gate." Right? It's only someone who is productive, who can reproduce, who can have children. Right? A point to note. When you are a baby, you cannot give birth. When you are a baby, you cannot send at a gate and welcome visitors or fight for your father when the enemy comes. Amen. So tonight, we want to build up such that the left hand and the right hand, the armor of God that will be holding, is enough to fight, is enough to help us stand, is enough to make us grow, as Mama was saying, that when the angel come declaring something to us, we will understand it because we'll be of edge. As you were saying, Pastor Eliza, we'll be able to address matters because we'll be of right state of mind. Minister Anonsa, what do you have to say? It's getting hotter now.
Amen. The Bible in the book of Johnson says, abide in me. Abide in me. That's a powerful message. Abide in me. So that when what Mama was saying, it cannot happen if you don't abide in Christ. It only needs you to abide in Christ for you to be built up. For Mary to have the child, she has to believe that it can happen.
Right.
So the Bible says, abide in me. And in the book of Isaiah chapter 60, it says, arise and shine, for the glory of the Lord has come. Hallelujah. Which means tonight, for you to change, to be built up, you need the inner man to arise. And you need also to abide. Tonight, we are going to pray for the abiding anointing.
Oh yes.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah.
We need to be filled with the abiding anointing, not the impatience anointing. Because impatience anointing.
Come and go.
Come and go. But if you have the abiding anointing.
Hallelujah, hallelujah.
Wow. You remain.
Oh yes.
Jesus.
Oh yes, tonight is another night, as you can hear.
There's a bigger transformation when you carry the abiding anointing. Because when you have the abiding anointing, it works from within.
Inside. Wah, wah, wah.
And unto the nations. Then when you go to the book of Ezekiel, Ezekiel chapter 38, it says, "The river was flowing from the temple."
From the temple.
Yes.
Yes, not to the temple.
Not to the temple.
But from the temple. Oh, halala.
Which means the river was flowing from, from inside, unto the nations. And feed the nations. So tonight, we need the river that starts within. And feed to the nations. Because if you carry the river that is inside you, it changes you first.
Oh yes.
And change the surroundings.
Oh yes.
Because if you go with that verse, chapter 38, it says, "When the river was flowing, animals, plants, everything, fish, they were surviving."
Hallelujah.
And bearing more fruits in June season. Back to you, ten o'clock.
As we, my family online, you can hear this, you can hear this. Please like, like and share this broadcast tonight, because we are not going to remain the same. The rivers of the living waters shall flow from our bellies, shall flow from the creator, shall flow from your knees, shall flow from what you think doesn't matter tonight, because that thing you think is nothing is gonna grow and it's gonna grow big. When it grows big, it will be productive. When it becomes productive, it will build up into a nation. After building up into a nation, it will create wonders. And those wonders tonight is what we want. As the president worship is gonna lead us in a song. We want to go before the Lord and say, God, prepare me the way you want me to be. In the name of Jesus.
Thank you, Jesus.
Pray, let it rain. Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain. Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain.
Open the gates of your children.
Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain. Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain. Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain.
Open the gates of your children.
Open the floodgates of heaven.
Open the gates of your children. Let it rain, let it rain.
Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain. Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain. Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain. Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain, let it rain. Open the floodgates of heaven. Let it rain. Rada bayadokai. You say the Lord that out of our belly shall flow the river of living waters. Here we are, every time I cry that tonight is the children. We should build up my inner man, oh Lord. Build up my inner man, oh your Spirit. We need your grace and your glory, amen, the Father. We need your grace, oh Lord. Open up the floodgates of heaven and let it rain upon our lives. Let it rain upon our lives. Oh yes, Jesus. I hope we give it all, they shall believe and receive water. As we give it all, Jesus. Father, let, let receive us, receive water upon our belly. Let them drink us of living waters upon our身子. Let them receive us of living waters upon his head. We are glad that he is our Father, we pray, oh Jesus Christ. Abide in us, oh God, we pray the light upon us, oh Jesus Christ. Rada bayadokai. We pray, oh Jesus. Father, we pray, oh mighty God. You are just as holy. You are holy, that is great, the Lord. That is going to abide in us, that is going to abide in the Spirit. That is going to abide in us, in the name of Jesus Christ. Father, we pray, oh God, it's me, it's you, oh God. In the name of Jesus. That is God, 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 upon our lives, that is going to bring the light in our situation. That is all, Father, we hope you, oh God, we cannot walk in the river, we hope you, oh God, without the knowledge and the fear of you, oh Jesus Christ, we cannot develop our inner man. Father, we pray for our inner man. We pray, oh God, may our inner man, as your children, grow on mighty, ah, may our inner man, oh Jesus Christ, increase, even if our weak, our weak operator, in the name of Jesus Christ, I pray for your children, amen. I pray for their spiritual being, to develop a better understanding, to develop a better relationship with you, oh God. Father, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, for we want to grow with you. The way you breathe, the way you encourage us, oh Jesus Christ, for you encourage us in your breathing, and we pray, oh mighty God, that may you develop a new understanding of your word, oh Jesus Christ. The same way that the word is carrying so much power, the same way that the word is carrying so much authority, the same word that is carrying so much life, even in the word, in the beginning of the creation, you speak a word and you think that they delight us. The suffering that was hovering, we don't intend to end it. But when we, when we invite the word of God, there was a stranger, there was a titan. Father, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, as we pray, oh God, as we understand your word, oh mighty God, we pray, transform our life, transform and, oh God, when we grow spiritually, may our inner man rise in power, may our inner man rise in authority, in the name of Jesus Christ. Father, as we are killing our fleshly desire, I want everyone that is watching us, may their spiritual be developing, in the name of Jesus Christ. We thank you, oh God, in Jesus' name we pray.
You know, Mama Shumba, as, as we were talking earlier on, you know, it's one thing to grow and be productive. It's one thing also to be stupid in production. As much as we want to grow, not as much as we want wisdom. Can you lead us in the next? Can you lead us in the next prayer?
Jill? Hallelujah.
Amen.
Well, I want us to pray tonight. Sister Nomsa was talking about John 15, the word of God who says, "Abide in me, and I in you." It reminded me of Psalms 91, where it says, "He that dwelleth in the secret place of the most high God shall abide, shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty." Do you know what the shadow of the Almighty is? Just a shadow.
Oh, yes.
Just a shadow, children of God. A shadow will turn things around. A shadow of God is something so amazing. If you are here tonight, and you want you in your spirit, you're saying, "Oh, Lord, give me this privilege to understand you more, to dwell under your presence in the secret place, in that corner of your house, wherever you are, wherever you are right now." I just want all of us to kneel down and come before God. Let us yield in our spirits to abide in the Lord, and let the Lord abide in us, that our spiritual men shall rise up to the level that the Lord wants us to be. When we rise up to those levels, then we will see the glory of God that you have never seen before. Then we will see those things that we have been crying over years will be shocked, and what God is gonna do. Let us kneel down before God and cry before our God. As you are crying before our God, first of all, I want us to surrender our sins. You know yourself, you know what you have done? The sins that you have done knowingly and the sins that you have done unknowingly. I want you to cry unto God for him to, to, you know, with the precious blood of Jesus Christ, for him to forgive your sins thereafter, and say, "Lord, help me to be the inner man that you want me to be. Abide in me, and I will abide in you, oh God. Now pray, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, Father God, we come before you, Lord Jesus. I surrender myself before your throne of mercy and grace. I surrender my sins, oh God, the sins that I've done knowingly and the sins that I've done unknowingly, in the mighty name of Jesus. Create me a clean heart, oh God, and renew the right spirit within me, oh God. Give me, oh God, that I may be sweeter than snow. Create me, oh God, a clean heart. Create me, Lord. Create me, Lord. Create me, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus. Purify me, oh God. Purify me with your precious blood that was shed for me at the cross of Calvary. Thank you for the blood of Jesus. Thank you for the blood of Jesus. The blood that was shed for me. The blood of our mighty God. But we pray, oh mighty God, and purify us, oh Jesus Christ. Thank you for the blood of Jesus. Thank you for the blood of Jesus. Thank you for the cleansing, blood of Jesus Christ, in the mighty name of Jesus. We pray, oh God, for making you worthy. Have you met upon us, oh Jesus Christ, our tongues, with things that are not of God, our ears, hearing that are not of your? We entertain things that are not of you. But we are here in total surrender. We are here in saying everything before your presence. Have you met upon us, oh God? Clean us with your blood, oh Jesus Christ. But we pray for the renewal of our mind. We pray for the renewal, oh God. For a covenant, oh mighty God, the same covenant that is writing with Abraham. Father, may it be of growing upon us, and we are sinners, oh God, from the land that we carry from Adam. Father, we are sinners by blood. Forgive us, oh Jesus Christ. As a nation, we pray for forgiveness. As a nation, we pray, we cry for purification. Purify our nation, purify our leaders. Purify us, oh God, from the one that we are coming from us, from the families that we are coming from us, from the community that we are coming from us, from the circle of God that we are always in. Purify us, oh Jesus Christ. But we pray, oh mighty God, for your mighty, oh mighty God, have you met upon your children? Have you met upon us, oh God? As the ministry, we pray for mess. But we pray for mess of our leaders. We cry for mess upon every body of Christ. But have you met upon us, oh God? Saying, "Shilling, saying, "Strangely." But we pray for mess, oh mighty God. Have you met upon us? We pray, oh God, for you to abide in us, oh Jesus Christ. Abide in us, oh mighty God. And say that you abide in us. You are, you abide, you abide in you, oh mighty God. We want an anointing that is might abide in us, oh God, that is going to be like a river of living waters. God is going to be overflowing. Let your light shine upon us, oh mighty God. Let your glory be shone upon our heads. May we be the reason why, how the people glorify you, oh God. May we be the reason why your name is uplifted. But we pray, oh mighty God, we pray, oh God, for your light to be in us, oh God. We pray, oh mighty God, that we have the fear of God. That we have the fear of you, oh God. As the ministry, as individuals, as pastors, as in branches. But we pray for the fear of God. We pray, oh mighty God, abide in our branches, abide in our pastors, abide in our leaders. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, oh mighty God, abide in our departments, in the name of Jesus Christ, I speak of you to abide upon those that are watching us, oh light. Let them be abiding in you, oh God. Let your glory be shining upon us. Let your light be shining upon us, oh God. But we pray, oh mighty God, that we manifest your goodness, oh God. May we be the mirror of Jesus Christ, but as you crucify us, oh God. But may we be, oh God, with our eyes, oh God. We crucify, oh God, and carry, oh God, your power and strength, oh God. Your patience, oh Jesus Christ. But we pray, oh mighty God, as a nation, we pray, oh God, as the children of God, we cry, oh God, as the bond of Christ, may abide in us, oh Jesus Christ. But we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. We pray, oh mighty God, as we are speaking your word, and we are asking God to develop us, oh God, spiritually. May we grow, oh mighty God, even we have eyes. But some of our eyes that are not seen, but we pray, oh mighty God, as you are going to abide in us. May our spiritual eyes be open, and you are going to abide in us, oh God. But we pray our ears, let them be hearing from us. We pray, oh mighty God, may our goodness be ordered by you. But we pray, oh what is speaking, for your mighty, oh God, to continue, oh God, understanding us. May your mighty, oh God, carry us, oh God. And we are finishing this year. May your mighty, oh God, carry us, oh God. And we are starting 2026. But we pray, oh mighty God, that may you abide in us, oh God. We need more of you, oh mighty God. We need your presence, oh mighty God. We need you, oh Jesus Christ. We need you, oh mighty God, our, our spiritual being, and suffer them through our actions, our spiritual being, and suffer them through the, through the way our, our flesh has been overcome. But we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, as we come before your presence. Clean us, oh God. Purify us, oh Jesus Christ. Sanify us, oh God, with your blood. Renew our minds, day by day. But we thank you, oh mighty God, for the purification of our hearts. We thank you, oh God, for the cleansing of our nation. We thank you, oh God, for the forgiving of our sins, and the ministry for the forgiving of our sins, and the bond of Christ. But we pray, oh mighty God, as we are honoring your name, and we are surrendering everything before your presence, oh mighty God. We say, take all the glory, take all the glory, oh mighty God, in Jesus' name, we thank you, oh God. We worship, oh mighty God, in Jesus' name, we thank you, oh God.
So, for your name, let it be exalted. You know, the Bible says, if a man decides to build a house, he starts by calculating the costs. As we want the Lord to rebuild us, as we want the Lord to make us grow big. Let us give this time to Pastor Eliza and lead us in the next prayer.
Oh, yes. We want to go before the Lord, as we are still, we, we are all fighting for our spiritual being, hallelujah. May we all stand in the presence of God, hallelujah. We want to go before the Lord and pray, hallelujah. We are in a season whereby our flesh is being killed. We are killing our fleshly desires. We are building a powerful spiritual being in us. So I want us to go before the Lord and command. We want to speak to those, to, to those habits. We want to speak to those weaknesses that is not allowing us, that is not, that is hindering us from the presence of God. So I want, as the Bible says, you shall declare a thing and it shall be established. So as we are declaring now, let there be establishment, so that when we are starting 2026, we are going to start with those without any fleshly desire. We are going to start with, with, with the inner man that is strong, as we are the spiritual child, hallelujah. So I want you to speak, I want you to declare some, as you are going to remove that weakness, replace it with something of God, hallelujah. So I want to speak right now, I want you to pray with us, viewers, be on your knee, be on your, be on your feet right now, and remove that weakness. You know that masturbation is your weakness. You know stealing is your weakness. You know lying is your weakness. You know gossip is your weakness. You know those weaknesses. I want us to go before the Lord, because you cannot grow spiritually without removing things of the flesh. You cannot grow spiritually when you are still carrying your past.
Amen.
You will not grow when you are still having hatred. So if I'm saying weaknesses, I'm not saying only weaknesses. There's other things that you are still carrying. There is a past that you are still having. There is single mothers that are still holding unto their baby daddies. There are single fathers that are still holding to their baby mamas. So I want those, there is someone who hurt you, and you still have that, that person has hurt me. There's someone who borrowed your money and you didn't, you didn't give you. So I want, as we want to start 2026 in a very clean surface, I want you to go before the Lord and speak and ask for forgiveness, as we have asked for forgiveness. But as you are removing this weakness, we have to ask also for forgiveness, so that we can be cleansed, you can move forward. Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, I'm praying against every weakness that is still in me, any weakness that is still carried by your children. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray, must die in the name of Jesus Christ. I pray right now, to die in the name of Jesus Christ. There is past that we are carrying, a single mother. There is past that people are carrying from where they are coming from, from the background, from their foundation, from their parents. There is past that is still hounding us. But in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, remove every past, remove everything that has been hindering from your presence, anything that has been hindering from your presence. If it's any weakness, if it's lying, that is making us not to go before your presence. If it's sickness, that is making us lament, that why am I having this sickness? Why am I having poverty? And it's making us not to go before you. But we pray, oh God, as we say, there is nothing shall separate us from your presence right now, must be lying. I pray right now, to be removed upon my prayer life. Must be jealous, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, to be removed upon this journey, as I'm starting a new journey. There is weakness upon our lives. There is something that is hindering our prayer life. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray, oh God, jealous, must die in the name of Jesus Christ. A liar shall must die upon every child of God. Masturbation shall not be part of your children. But in the name of Jesus Christ, I pray against any weakness. Must be a weakness that we are carrying from our father's side, as vengeance that we are still carrying, that is not allowing us to move with the move of God. That is not allowing us to be in your presence, that is hindering us. But in the name of Jesus Christ, I pray right now, as there is nothing shall separate us from you, oh God. Remove everything that is not allowing us to go before your presence. But I pray against every fleshed desire, anything that is doing my station, must be less than, must be prostration. I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, must die in the name of Jesus Christ. Everything that is doing, making against the work of God, that is still in me, that is not of you, that is hindering. The progress in the way of God, I command it out in the name of Jesus Christ. I command it out in the name of Jesus Christ. But we come before your presence, as other people that hate us, and we are still carrying in our hearts, we are not forgiving other people. But we are coming before your presence. We are also asking, oh God, to remove that jealous, to remove that pleasure, to remove that hatred, in the name of Jesus Christ. I pray against this right now, as we are inviting us, our spiritual beings, oh God, that we are going to move in the ways of God, whereby sickness, whereby weakness, that are not of you, of paralyzing us, whereby everything that is hindering us, we are looking into it, and we are not oppressed by it. Whereby, oh God, anything that has been hindering us shall not have power upon us. But we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, as we are coming, oh God, with this God knowing that, with you, there is nothing that is impossible. As we are laying every weakness before you, as we are laying everything that is not of you before you, and we want our inner sheep to grow, oh mighty God.
Hallelujah.
We want our inner being to grow.
In Jesus' name we pray. Hallelujah. Praise Jesus. What a beautiful day, what a beautiful night that the Lord has given unto us. And we are Giam Ministries. I'm here with my pastors, and we are broadcasting live from Pretoria, West 255 Court Street. I don't know, where are you watching us from? And we believe that as you are watching us, you are not just watching a TV. You are connected in prayer. Hallelujah. So tell us, where are you watching from? We are live here in Pretoria at 255 Court Street. By the way, we don't want to waste much time, we wanna go back into prayer. And our topic, our theme today was, "Lord, build me up." Some topics sound so simple until you begin to understand the essence or the secrets behind them. Can you give us Jeremiah, chapter 1, verse 5? What does he say? Thank you so much, Holy Ghost. Thank you so much, Holy Spirit. Jeremiah, chapter 1, verse 5. "Oh, Lord, build me up. Before I formed you in the mother's womb, I knew you. Before you were born, I set you apart and appointed you as a prophet to the nations." So what God here is telling Jeremiah is a mystery. People see this scripture as simple, but it's not simple. It's not talking about when Jeremiah was born. It's not talking about when Jeremiah was in the womb. It's not talking about pregnancy. It's talking about pre-pregnance, before pregnancy. So before pregnancy, before Jerem, before even the mother and the father of Jeremiah decided to fall in love, the Lord had a process which he did, which is a process of building up. Before I formed you, there are two, two processes there. I, 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 I would touch the other one, but I wanna talk about the process before he was formed. What happened before he was formed, before, before a human being was formed in the womb? What was that? What was that? He was known by God, but the first thing, he was known by God. So your prayer this night, God know me. Because if you are outside his constituents, you are prone to diseases. You are prone to attacks. You are prone to anything that can kill other people because you are not in his books. Imagine you go to, like in our rural areas in Zimbabwe, for you to be considered a dweller of the place. You have to be in what you call a book. So the chief is called Sabuk. He has the book, which has the names of all the people who are in the, in his area. So if you can have a problem and you go to the chief and say, Baba, I have a problem. You check first in his book if you are there. If you are not there, no matter you were raped, no matter what, you will look for your chief, not him. So if you are not in the constituents of God, you, 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 you live as a problem, a, a problem person. Your life will go in an order that will even shock you. Before I formed you in your mother's womb, I knew you. Say, God, please know about me.
Please know about me.
God. I, I, I want you to look at this, please, look at this. The whole world was filled with million people. And God asked Satan about Job. One man. Where are you coming from devil? I'm from the earth, I was roaming around. God did not say, did you see the thousand people who are there? He said, one man, did you see Job my servant who fear sins? So it means that all those thousands were there, but Job was different because he was known. So the reason why the devil was there and could not touch Job, it was because he was known. So if you are known by God, that's the first level of creation, that's the first level of, 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 of higher level of spirituality. I want you to go before his presence and say, God, besides me knowing you, I want you to know me. Because if we can't, we can't know God 100%, maybe things that we know about him, just 1%. So I want you to go before the presence of the Lord and say, God, please know about me. Imagine, I love the scripture that says, your God knows what you want before you ask. Imagine that kind of level of love where he already knows that you are sick. He already knows that you are arrested. He already knows that you, you don't have a job. So some other people are going through other tough times. The problem might be that God does not know you. Say, God, please know about me. Please know about me. Let's go before the presence of the Lord right now and begin to pray. Type in the comment section, say, God, know about me. Please, God, know about me. We have been praying every day to know you, but right now we are praying for something different. We are praying that you may know us. We are praying that you may discover a lot about us. In the mighty name of Jesus, open up your mouth and pray. Open up your mouth and pray. Open up your mouth and pray. Even Jesus himself, there is a day where he said, oh my Father, why hast thou forsaken me? It means that his eyes were no longer fixed on Jesus. When his eyes are not fixed on us, problems will be on us. Pray that the Lord may know you. Pray that the Lord may know you. Say, Lord, don't neglect me. Lord, don't take away your eyes from me. Lord, fix your attention on me. Lord, let everything about you be on me. Pray now, open up your mouth. It's an important prayer point. God must know about us. We need to be known by God. We need to be in his constituents. We need to be in his book. Oh my Father, my Father, my Father, I wanna be like Job into your eyes. I don't wanna be a stranger into your eyes. I don't wanna be somebody you don't know. I wanna be somebody you consider every day. I wanna be the nipple of your eye. Oh my God, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. Somebody open up your mouth and say, God, please know about me. Oh God, please know about me. The way you knew Job, the way you understood Job, the way you have details about Job. They it be the same with me right now. In the mighty name of Jesus. Open up your mouth, it's very important. Open up your mouth, open up your mouth. Type in the comment section, say, God, know everything about me. Type in the comment section, say, God, know everything about me. Know my weaknesses, know my weaknesses. Type it in the comment section, know my weaknesses, know my weaknesses. Know my gifts, know my strength. In the name of Jesus, know my addictions, know the future problems, know everything about me. Discover about my relationship, discover about my marriage, discover about my business. When God knows you, you are covered. When your name is written in his books, you are covered. We are crying for this mercy, we are crying for this curse. I don't wanna be a stranger. Say, I don't wanna be a stranger in your kingdom. I don't wanna be a stranger in your kingdom. I don't wanna be a stranger in your kingdom. I don't wanna be a stranger in your kingdom. I know, listen to me. I know some people, some people are not really feeling this prayer point, but I wanna, I wanna tell you something. There was a moment when Jesus sent his disciples to cast demons, who were sick, raised the dead, and do miracles. The Bible says, they came from that place, yepi. They were so jovial, they were so happy, they were so fascinated because of the things that they had seen there. But Jesus said, do not celebrate because of that, celebrate that your names are written in heaven. So you can live actually on this earth when your name is not written there. That is why you hear that Peter was given an authority, that whatever he find here be bound in heaven. We don't wanna be popular on earth, we wanna be popular in heaven. We don't wanna be known on earth, we wanna be known in heaven. We don't wanna be recognized by people, we wanna be recognized by Jesus. So go before the presence of the Lord, say, God, I don't wanna be popular in the eyes of men. I wanna be popular in your eyes. I don't wanna, I don't want my name to be remembered on earth because the earth will pass. I wanna be recognized by you. Fire prayer. Oh my Father, in the name of Jesus, let my name be written in heaven. Let my name be written in heaven. Oh my Father, I pray. I don't wanna be a person who is known here, but in heaven my name is not known. I am praying, my Father, in first development, know about me. Know about me, know about me, know about me. Type in the comment section, say, God, know about me. Discover about me, write my name in your kingdom. I can open for you plenty scriptures which talks about names that were found in heaven. There are names, there is a book of names in heaven. There is a book of names in heaven. In the book of Revelations, we have John that there is a book which was opened. And the names which were not found in that book were sent to hell. Refuse to be one of those people who are not going to be found in the book of life. Open up your mouth right now. Open up your mouth right now. Open up your mouth right now. Oh my God, oh my God, listen to me, listen to me. If you are in the mood of prayer, and the books were opened. And there was a book which was opened, which was the book of life, in the book of Revelations. And the books which were not found, the names which were not found in the books. All those names were meant for Gehenna. So you must pray and say, God, write my name in your book. So that when the day comes, when books are being opened, my name shall be found. Open up your mouth and cry, oh Lord. I want my name to be found there where the books are opened. Let me be found there where the books are opened. Let me be found there. I want my name to be in the book of life. I want my name to be remembered in heaven. I don't wanna be in heaven dweller. I refuse, I refuse, I refuse, I refuse. Cry, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. Let our names be written in the book of life. Let our names be written in the book of life. We are crying before your presence. We want our names to be taken, include my name, include my name. Type in the comment section, say, include my name, include my name. Oh son of David, include my name. Oh my God, oh my God. Somebody open up your mouth, begin to cry unto the Lord. Say, I want my name to be part of the book of life. I want my name. This is important, this is important, this is important, this is important, this is important. Arakarabosh. Oh my God, oh my God. Write my name in the book of life. 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 Write my name. Listen to me, as we are closing this chapter, I want you to remember this. The Bible says, many will come to me that day. They will say, I preached in your name, we casted demons in your name, we prophesied in your name. Then I will say unto them, I don't know you. So it's very possible to do everything on earth, in the church, sin in the church, prophesy, heal the sick, cast demons. And Jesus say, I don't know you. So when I'm telling you to cry and say, God, I want you to know me, it's something that is a need as we are living on this earth. Open up your mouth and say, Father, say, Father, I don't wanna be known on this earth. And be unknown in heaven. I don't wanna be recognized by people and be unrecognized in your presence. Fire prayer. Oh my God, oh my God. Cry somebody, cry somebody, cry somebody, cry somebody. As you are holding your sword, open up your mouth and pray. Say, Father, I wanna be known by you. Say, Father, I wanna be known by you. Type in the comment section, say, I wanna be known by you. Say, I wanna be known by you. Say, I wanna be known by you. Type in the comment section, say, son of David, I wanna be known by you. Oh son of David, I wanna be known by you. Oh son of David, I wanna be known by you. Lakaradan o sheka, zebari koma, shikalaba sen tokapa. Oh son of David, oh son of David, write my name in your book. Write my name in your kingdom. Oh my God. Open up your mouth. Oh my Father, write my name in your kingdom. Write my name in the record of the kingdom. Write my name. Listen, put back this scripture. Jeremiah chapter 1 verse 5. We wanna pray, we wanna pray. The atmosphere is hot, the angels of the Lord are here and we are praying. Before I formed you in your mother's womb, I knew you, number one. We need to be known by God. Before you were born, I set you apart. So when God is developing you, he need to make you special, he set you apart. He, he differentiates you from other people. He doesn't count you from the crowd, he counts you as an individual. He must know you by name and sign and your occupation. Say, Father, set me apart.
Set me apart.
Father, set me apart. I don't wanna be an ordinary citizen of the kingdom. Imagine, the Bible says, and everyone was judged according to what he did. Then I'll ask you the question, what did you do for the kingdom? You were doing nothing. Some people are ashes, some people are, are, are in the present worship. Some people are evangelists, some people are, are, are playing drums, some people keyboard, some people are singing here. And some of us, we are leading prayers here. It means that we were set apart for what? For praying, for what? For playing the keyboard, for what? For singing, for what? For leadership, for what? For leadership, and when now, what are you set apart for? Say, Lord, set me apart for your kingdom. Lord, set me apart for your kingdom. I don't wanna be among the crowd, I wanna be on my own. And you be proud of the work that I am doing. Fire prayer, somebody pray. Oh my God, I don't wanna be an ordinary citizen of the kingdom. I wanna be an apostle for the peoples, an apostle for change, an apostle for righteousness, an apostle for the world. Eh, rakabano shakapa. Set me apart. Open up your mouth, open up your mouth. Say, God, set me apart. 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 In the name of Jesus, I don't wanna be an ordinary citizen of this kingdom. I wanna be somebody spectacular, somebody important, somebody big. Cry, 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 cry. The Lord will hear you. Cry, cry, the Lord will hear you. Cry, cry. Open up your mouth and pray. Cry unto the Lord. Type in the comment section, say, God, give me something to do. Type in the comment section, say, God, give me something to do. Type in the comment section, say, God, give me something to do. Not in my life, but in your kingdom, but in your kingdom. Oh my God, oh my God. Listen to me, put the scripture again, put the scripture again. There is an important part there. Put it back. Oh my God, Jeremiah chapter 1 verse 5. Kobaya takash, santoko pa. Set me apart. Before I formed you in your mother's womb, I knew you, number one. And before you were born, I set you apart. And I appointed you as a prophet to the nations. Say, God, appoint me, anoint me for a change. Anoint me for a win. Anoint me for victory. Lift up your right hand and say, God, anoint this hand. Anoint this hand for a purpose, for qualification, not for controversy, not for denial, not for failure. Hold up your head right now and begin to declare the anointing. Declare, 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 declare. As you are holding your head, declare the anointing. Declare the anointing. Declare the anointing. Yekaraba bo shakapa. Oh my God. Oh my God, don't send me as a man, you may be. Anoint this hand, anoint this hand. Give power to this hand, give victory to this hand in the name of Jesus. Pray, 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 pray. As you are in your room right now, begin to walk around. They must think that you are crazy. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. Don't care about what they think. You know what you are doing, you know what you are doing, you know what you are doing. Anoint me all out. Type in the comment section. Say, anoint me all out, anoint me all out, anoint me all out, anoint me all out, anoint me all out. Cry, cry. Yes, my Father, yes, my Father, yes, my Father. I know this hand is receiving the anointing. I know this hand is receiving a portion, a bigger portion, a bigger portion, a bigger portion, a bigger portion of the power, of the anointing, of the power, of the portion, of the anointing. Rakapatos, you are anointed, Sean. You are anointed, Sean. You are going overseas, you are going to countries, you are going to nations. You shall go to Asia, you shall go to Europe, you shall round up Africa preaching the gospel in the name of Jesus. It's your season, it's your moment. You are anointed, Sean. You are anointed, you are a great servant of the Lord, a voice to the world, not a voice to the country. Oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. We are a result of what we say with our mouth. We are a result of what we declare on our mouth, on our lives. Say, Father, Father, anoint me for greatness. Father, anoint me for the gospel. Father, anoint me for achieving. Say, Father, anoint me for purification in the name of celebration, Jesus. I want you to listen to me. This is very prophetic. This is very, very, very prophetic. The Lord was showing me something. He said, if you look at this scripture before I formed you in your mother's womb, it's not just a scripture, it's a revelation that if people look deep into it, they will have a lot to understand about how I work. Remember Jeremiah, put back the scripture, please. Put back the scripture, I want you to see something here. There are things that happened before he was in the womb. There are things that happened when he was now in the womb. Check there, you find them. Before I formed you in your mother's womb, number one, he was known. He was what?
Known.
I knew you. Then before you were born, I set you apart. The only person who can be born is a person who is now a pregnant. So he was set apart when he was now in the womb. He was appointed as a prophet to the nations when he was now in the womb. So what does it mean? If Jeremiah had came out of his mother's womb without God setting him, number one, apart, without God anointing him as a prophet to the nation, he was going to come out of his mother's womb as an ordinary person. His life was not going to have a direction. That is why you see the same process happened when Adam was still in the womb of God. In the book of Genesis, chapter 1, verse 26 and 27. God came and blessed him and Eva together. Multiply, be fruitful, conquer the earth, do everything. Then in chapter 2, Adam was created as a physical being and God breathed his spirit, the first one. So when God was breathing his spirit, he was now giving birth into the body. So the body was empty, it was not given any blessing. So if Adam had made a mistake of waking up and begin to walk before the spirit was breathed in, he was going to become an ordinary person. So he had to wait like a dead person. And God breathes the spirit that has the blessing to rule the world, the spirit that has the blessing to multiply. So what God was saying to me, people must be patient with me because sometimes I am waiting to give them things so that I can prepare them first. So there is a time when your life is silent, when things are not moving according to your direction. That's the time when God is preparing you for your work. Remember, I told you when I was there sitting, I said, I wanted to be the youngest minister in Zimbabwe, powerfully anointed. So one day, God began to give me some revelations. He said, look at your friend, your brother. He started ministry at nineteen years old. Right now, he's failing to control himself when it comes to humanizing. It's not even his fault. I took him before he knew anything. So when I took him, he started to know woman when he was now in ministry. So when it caught him, he could not have control, it was something new. So I didn't want a mistake like that on your life. I had to disappoint you on your hope of becoming the youngest minister in Zimbabwe and take you into the world, prepare you. I prepared you not through Bible school, I prepared you by disappointing you. I was so disappointed. Pastor said, I don't have a calling. My leader said, I don't have a calling. Everyone was just fighting me. They were fighting me so that I don't stay in the church. I go into the world and learn there. When Moses is living with the Pharaoh in Egypt comfortably, yet God wants Moses to be a shepherd. He will cause a problem in Egypt which will make him go somewhere and he will learn how to lead sheep. So your disappointment is an appointment, your failure is a win. Your times of loneliness are your high times. So whatever you are going through, sometimes God is preparing you for tomorrow. If I had come into ministry without experience, I was going to preach nonsense, number one. And I was not gonna be strong to handle myself the way I'm doing. But how did God prepare me? He sent me to the world. I discovered the problems of women, the challenges they face and everything that they can go through. I understood that women are not only for, I love you. They need to be led to the kingdom. So when God is developing you, he can't send you to ministry before he trains you about ministry. Even the government itself copied the system from Jesus. Jesus, before he sent his disciples, he stayed with them for three years, preparing them for ministry. He did a little and they did more. Why? Because sometimes he would send them to go and experience. So some of you, you are in the areas or seasons of dryness. Your life is not showing any sign of a person who is worshiping God. Don't worry, God is preparing you. When you are done, you shall be released. When you are prepared, you shall be released. Say, my time is coming. The Lord is preparing me. Do you know that before Eve came, Adam was given cows? You must go and read your Bible, not rushing. You will see a portion whereby God had to give Adam animals for him to be to. You must go and look for it. It's written there in the Bible. But if you are rushing, you won't see it. The first experiment for God to see if Adam is not happy was giving animals first. Go and read it. I know some of you, something that is shocking. Go and read the Bible slowly, slowly, you will find that part. Adam, Eve was the next option when God had tested, okay, so cows do not really do well with him. So let me give him that one that I had prepared in the beginning in the spirit then God gave Eve. So what is happening here? God is studying Adam, his flaws, his weaknesses, his strength and everything. So whatever situation you are going through, sometimes it's your training. Some of us, we were trained by hunger. Have you ever seen my love for people? It's natural. It's natural. It is because I grew up as a person who was disadvantaged, but because of the love of people around me, I realized that you found the verse. Chapter 1. What does it say?
It says, Genesis chapter 2, verse 19 says, and out of the ground, the Lord God formed every beast of the field and every fowl of the air and brought them unto Adam to see what he would call them. And whatsoever Adam called, every living creature was the name thereof.
So, so if a cow is first, came first, then the guy was given a woman later. And with the cows, Adam was still sad. So God is making experiments with you. Sometimes he bring you things to test if you are now able to handle them. If you fail the test, you will discover that, no, we need to give this person more time, more time. It's not enough yet. So say, God, build me up in your proper way. I told you my stories for God to test me. Eight days under one roof with the woman, just after calling. You are coming from the world where you are humanized. Then God gives you such a temptation. He want to test if the person is right. I'm not talking about this test only, there are some other people. Amashuma, I want you to look at this. Examples that God gives me are very, very nice and I don't only see them in the Bible. So I was watching a zebra which gives birth. So the moment it gives birth, the hyenas just came in. The mother ran. The child was not even knowing what's going on. She doesn't know whether to run or she run away. The only thing that she knows is the womb. And the hyenas attacked the kid and it ate the kid. So God was saying to me, this is what we call a season of building up. What's a season of building up? When God hides you from things before you are ready. Because he knows that sometimes if he gives you money before you develop a good character of keeping that money, the money that he will give you will end yourself to the death. So God will wait for a little until you are able to be content with it. One day when you make money, you still sleep in your house. He will say, now, now my daughter is, you know. Some other people, the moment they have money, they will leave church, they will begin to wear pump shorts, they will begin to go clubbing. And when at the moment you can receive money and still go to church, come early, sweep in the church, pray and fast, God will say, my daughter is ready now. You understand? Even marriage, before he gives you marriage, he prepare you for marriage. He sends you sometimes to live with people who are fighting, you learn. He sends you to live with people who are abusive to each other, you learn. He sends you, it's a lot that happens when God is preparing you. So the kid was born and was early exposed to the enemy. If he was given a time to grow and stretch his leg, he was going to outrun the hyena, but he was not given. So God can do that, even preachers. It has that, there are preachers who can spend ten years, nobody hears them. You wonder why? God, this preacher, I've seen a lot of people who say, apostle, I wish if the world can hear you. They say, you don't know God. God is even hiding me from a certain level. Because right now where we are as a ministry, fifteen branches, they are, I'm seeing a lot. And there is also another level that shall be opened by marriage. So God now is keeping me because he knows that if he stretches the ministry to a level that needs a wife, yet I don't have a wife, I'm going to be in trouble. So before that moment, he will hide me. People will do like they don't see me, but shall see there is a time when God will expose me and I'll burst out to the world. And what I'm talking about, I am not talking about I alone. All of you, you mean me and I mean you, we are one vision. The world will hear and they will begin to go back to the old messages, old videos, but right now the God of heaven knows what we can carry. So he's preparing us for greatness. Say, God, teach me to be patient when you are preparing me for greatness. You hear me, daughter? Allow God to put you in the cave of Adullam, the place of hiding. You go into that place, God looks like he's not looking at you, but the fact that he's providing you food is enough for you to believe in him. I was there, I was in Adullam for eight to ten years. Yet when I finished the school, I wished to be the youngest preacher. And God called me when I was now an adult. He knew that my ministry didn't need an amateur, it needed an adult, an adult with experience. That is why you hear some things that I speak are not for a young guy. How did God train me yet to send me into the world? Disappoint me on my dream of becoming the youngest preacher. So I didn't, I didn't need to become the youngest preacher. I needed to be a preacher that God trained. When God sees that Peter is not able to cast out demons yet, Jesus will cover for him. That is why you see Jesus said, these ones will not fast so long I am there, they will fast when I'm gone. So I will train them what to do so that when they are there alone, they will know. So Jesus was trying to say, as of now, don't worry, I am training them. When they are exposed to the wind, they will just follow the pattern. Because now when I was on the wind, they saw how I did it. When they are on the wind, they will follow the pattern. So all this time, God was preparing Peter, Thomas, Patronio and all of them. Say, God, make me know when you are preparing me. God, make me know when you are preparing me. Before we pray for this, I wanna tell you something. God is not really moved by tears. Because sometimes you'll be crying for things we don't know. God, I want a car. He knows how reckless you are. You want a car, you are reckless with man. You put your money here, you will go and check it in the bedroom. In the bedroom, you go to the toilet, from the toilet, you are looking for the man that you left on the table. Then after one hour, you say, ah, I left it here. If you are negligent with man, what about cars? You die. So sometimes God makes sure that you develop a spirit of carefulness. I used to be like that. I lose phones, I lose everything, but nowadays I make sure I have everything. So you can develop before you are sent to the world, before you are sent to marriage, before you are sent to riches, before you are sent to preach. Be prepared, be prepared. If you go unprepared, if the wind blows against you, you are going to perish. Anybody who is unprepared will perish. You think you can run this ministry if you're not prepared? You can die. Especially a ministry is stressful. You remember things that I was telling you there? How do you handle such things? You can die with this ministry, but as we are prepared. Because at one point in my life, I slept in a house where if the water is raining, it was passing through, pastor will know what I'm talking about, through the house. So what do you do when it's raining? You stand up and carry your blanket. One night and in the morning, my guy, that's the life that I lived. And God was strengthening me because I faced a lot of things in ministry. So when you see me being a tough person, I'm not a tough person because God said be strong, no. He made me to go through tough times so that he can strengthen me. Jesus, say, Father, make me what you want, what you want to make me. What you want me to be? Open up your mouth right now and begin to pray and say, Father, create in me a personality that you want, create in me, the person that you want, create in me, the person that you want, pray right now.
Create in me a strong person that you want me to be, oh Lord. May you create in me, oh heavenly Father, strengthen me. May you make me a person that you want me to be. May you be the person that according to the person you want me to be. Oh heavenly Father, Christ, and Jesus. May you create me to be a person that you want to be. Guide me to become a person that you want me to be, oh Lord. Here I am as a child of the Father. Here I am as a child of my God. In the name of Jesus Christ, Lord. Guide me to be the person that I am supposed to be. Be the perfect measure of your gospel.
It's an important prayer point. God is preparing you, God is preparing you. Say, "God, prepare me, God, prepare me." I don't wanna go prematurely. If I go prematurely, the jackals of the world will consume me. The jackals of the world will eat me up. I refuse to go early. I refuse to go before I am prepared. Pray, ask for God to prepare you. Ask for God to prepare you. We need to be prepared, we need to be prepared, we need to be prepared, we need to be prepared. Oh my God. My Father, I know you have good plans with my life. You have good plans with my life. But my prayer is that you may not expose me to the winds, that I'm not able to block, that you may not expose me to the thorns, that I'm not able to block every temptation, that I am not able to block. May you please help me from it. For the Bible says, "God does not allow temptation." We are not able to resist to come to us. So it means that God looks at our capabilities on how we can be able to handle things. Some of you, you are not yet growing in ministry because you are not able to handle altitudes. You are failing your smaller family. You are failing a smaller group virtually. How can you lead ministry? Say, "God, lead me." Say, "God, prepare me." Say, "God, prepare me." Say, "God, prepare me." Type in the comment section. Say, "God, prepare me." "God, prepare me." Even for marriage, even for ministry, even for miracles, even for my job, even for riches.
Prepare me all for the riches. Prepare me all for those good riches.
God need to prepare us. God need to prepare us. One day, there is a man of God who said to me, "Apostle, God is saying you shall be rich." Those days, I was suffering. I am not yet rich, I know that I'm gonna be rich. But I'm talking about a comparison between that time and this time. He said to me, "God is going to raise you." But when he raises you, don't forget the poor. I said, "I can't forget the poor." Because already right now, as I am poor, I am already remembering some other people of my caliber. So what am I saying right now? God tests you with the little things that you have. If you wanna be a giver, you don't have to start when you are rich. Start with the smaller things that you have so that you can be approved by God that you can do it. Don't say, "I wanna run an orphanage." When you are failing orphans in your family. You are not buying a book, you are not buying anything. So I want people to pray and say, "Father, prepare me for the next season which is coming. Father, prepare me for the next level which is coming." Because some next levels are not coming because you are not ready. You are not proving your worthiness. Open up your mouth and cry right now and say, "Father, prepare me." "Father, prepare me, Father, prepare me." Don't say, "I'll start giving when I have." Right now, you can share your sugar. You can say, you can share the two pairs of clothes that you have, the two pairs of shoes that you have. You can start from there. But you are not giving. So you are not ready. You are not ready. You are not ready. You are not ready. Say, "God, prepare me." Say, "God, prepare me." Prepare me, prepare me. Because if the preparation time takes so long, even your time will take long. If God takes much time in preparing you, I'm telling you, even yourself, you are going to take long to reach your season. Listen to me. As we are praying, as you are praying right now, I want you to remember that from Egypt to Israel, it was a matter of less than four months traveling. But the people had to go for 40 years. Why? They were not prepared for the good land. The land was ready, but the people were not ready. So they died in the wilderness because of themselves failing to be ready. There are a lot of things that you need to cry and say, "Father, take them out of my life." They are the reasons why you are not reaching your canon. Canon is closed, but it does not need people who are addicted to masturbation like you do. Your canon is closed, but it does not need people who don't know how to stay in the house like you. You are always everywhere, walking around, even for no reason. You are not composed. Canon will take long if people are not prepared. Canon will take long if people are still into alcoholism. Canon will take long if people are still smoking. Canon will take long if everything about you is still wrong. Canon is closed, but you are far from your preparation. Cry unto the Lord and say, "Father, help me. Father, help me. Father, help me. Father, help me. Father, help me." Somebody pray, somebody pray. Canon is not very far. It's you who is far. Your preparation is taking long. You are taking too long to quit masturbation. You are taking too long to quit fornication. That is why marriage is not coming. How can you be married when you are already practicing married people's stuff? How can you marry when you are already practicing married people's stuff? You must say, "Lord, purge me. Lord, take away all the powers, all the enemies that he is using against me." How can you be a leader when gossip is still on your mouth? How can you be a leader when you can't keep information in your heart? You are taking too long, you are taking too long, you are taking too long. You don't have patience, you don't have patience. Your character is too wrong. You don't have patience, you talk too much, you don't read the Bible. You are so weak in prayer. Which leader do you wanna become? Which mother do you wanna become? It's a lie. Your canon is not far, it's you who is far. My God, prepare me, prepare me, prepare me, prepare me, prepare me for the greater times that are coming, for the greater times that are coming. How can you be a celibate? Right now, you are known in your local area. You have plenty ladies all over. You are breaking right now. You are only known on Facebook, but your pride is unmatched. How can God allow you to become a celibate? When he knows that pride comes before falling. You have pride in smaller things. How can God give you picket fence? You are lying to yourself. Say, "God, prepare me." Prepare me, oh Lord. I wanna be a man of substance. Substance in speech, substance in everything, substance in character, substance, substance. Let me be a leader by example. What I do is what I preach. Prepare me, Father. I don't wanna be surrounded by scandals. I don't wanna be surrounded by problems. I don't wanna be surrounded by all the blame issues. Help me, my Father. Build me up, mend me up, in the name of Jesus. Pray somebody, pray somebody. It's a serious prayer point. God need to prepare us. He need to build us, he need to build us. Oh my God. 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 Prepare me, oh my Jesus. Prepare us for this work. Prepare us. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you so much, Jesus. We love you, we appreciate you, we appreciate you. We give all glory to the name of the living God, the God who was there in the beginning, the God who shall continue to be there. Harakatapa, shekataparia, sekepa. Oh my God, we worship your holy name. We give you all the praises. You are wonderful and beautiful. My King, the everlasting God, the wonderful counselor, maalekara, yadoshakim. Sata, sissi, yatiya, laba kantosh. He is wonderful.
Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Jesus. Oh my God. We worship him. Listen. One thing that I want you to do as you enter 2026, don't forget to purchase one of the materials behind there. The anointing water and the anointing oil, which are going to be released on 31 December on the cross overnight. These things have been there for now almost two months. And you have been making prayers on this altar every day. And this is the anointing that we started ministry with. And I believe that you are not going to be left out. They are going to be for the rentals of this church because we are owing a lot. So it's gonna be 150 rands, the oil and the water for the partners who are going to partner in this. But be very careful, some other people will take more and you'll be left out. I don't want you to be left out. Make sure you reserve your 150. Those who will be asking, "Are you gonna release them any day if we pray today?" No, it's only gonna be 31. If you don't wanna be left out, Pastor Eliza is here. You can make your deposit. As you wait for the day 31, your staff will be kept. So right now, I wanna, I want us to raise our hands towards the people. I want everyone to write what they want in the comment section. Your prayer request, what you want the Lord to do for you, and we are going to pray for you now. So write whatever that you want the Lord to do for you in the comment section, your prayer request. I and my pastors and my ministers here, we shall be raising our hands to you. And whatever that the Lord heard from you is exactly what he is going to do for you. Do you believe?
I believe.
Do you believe?
I believe.
If you believe, type "I believe."
I believe.
Say, "I believe."
I believe.
So I want you to write in the comment section what you want now. Type in the comment section. And we are praying. Dear Father, in the name of Jesus.
Yes, Lord.
I pray for everyone who is writing something in the comment section. Whatever prayer request that is being written there, I pray that you may remember them and give them the wishes of their hearts. I pray for the spirit of remembrance that when you are going through the prayer request, you may remember each and every individual and give them the wishes of their hearts. I stretch my hand as an anointed hand, not as an ordinary hand. By the name of Jesus, let every wish of your heart be fulfilled. Whatever that you are crying for, let the desires of your heart be given to you. There is a man who is watching us right now. You are addicted to alcohol and you drink Castle Lager. I saw you in the mighty name of Jesus. And right now, you are wearing something which is white, black, and white, black, white, black and blue, and you drink Castle Lager. The Lord God of heaven has located you. Today is your last day of drinking Castle Lager. I command the spirit to come out of your life in the mighty name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus, I prophesy that today is the day of your deliverance. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, I can see a woman with, of age, nearly 60 years. And right now, you are watching me, you are wearing a white tuk and you are watching me. Your years are towards 60, 50 something as we go upwards. God is saying those legs which are painful today are going to end today in the mighty name of Jesus. And you are getting your healing by the name of the Lord Jesus. I declare and I decree that your healing is coming now by the name of the Lord Jesus. I am praying for somebody who is wearing glasses like mine, but yours are because you have pains in your eyes. You don't see properly, you have a problem with your eyes. I am healing you by the name of Jesus. I declare and I decree that by the name of the Lord Jesus, you are getting your healing right now. I locate about five people who are watching me right now who have problems with their knees. Sometimes you just feel tired for no reason, especially when you are waking up in the morning. Five people are watching me right now. If you have that problem, healing is located you. As I'm praying right now, your knees are going to be healed by the name of Jesus. I pray for the right ear which is a problem. Sometimes it bleeds, sometimes urwa comes out. But I'm praying for you as you touch that right hand, that right ear. You are getting your healing right now by the name of Jesus. I locate a lady who has a name which starts by L. Is it Lois? You have a problem, I don't know, is it Lois or whosoever? A lady who has a problem of coughing. You cough a lot and it's been happening for almost three years in your life. I'm telling you, this hour, as I'm prophesying to you, you are getting your healing from that coughing which comes seasonally by the name of Jesus. I break the barriers by the name of Jesus. I break the barriers by the name of Jesus. I have located a person who is in bad bridge. You are looking for the foot of the worm. And God has remembered you. You are going to have a child. You go to a church like Maja, Maja, Maja. I pray for you right now that next year by this hour, you shall have your child by the name of Jesus. I prophesy to your life, everything shall be well with you. Everything shall be well with you. Everything shall be well with you. You shall grow, you shall grow. I prepare you for greatness and God shall prepare you for greatness in the mighty name of Jesus. This prayer shall not leave you like that. Your life is going to be different by the name of Jesus. Is this a man or a woman? I'm not sure about the gender. What I'm seeing on you, you feel dizzy and sometimes you blackout. Only the eyes and the head, the warp part will be active. But your eyes sometimes go dim that you see darkness. For you to be well, you have to wait for some minutes. But you are there, I know. I'm not sure about the gender, whether you are a woman or a man. But I pray for you right now by the name of Jesus. You are going to be healed in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Do I have a person who is a relative, who is a woman called Clara? The Lord is showing me that on 24 December Clara is planning a journey and the devil is planning an accident. Your journey is not a matter. Clara is going to see a boyfriend. But the Lord is saying, "This boyfriend is not yours. You must not go there." If you have a person who is called Clara, who want to travel around 24 December, go and tell him, go and tell him that says the Lord, "Don't go there. The boyfriend that you are going to is a wrong boyfriend. May the Lord deliver you and deliver this message to you. Clara, you are saved. Your relationship is coming, but this one is not." In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. I bless all of you, your souls. I bless your bodies. I bless your minds by the name of Jesus. Before I forget, there is a lady who is watching me. You do like you have a headache which crosses by the head, like it's cracking, like somebody cutting you with a knife. I am praying for you right now. Even as you are watching me, the noise of my voice is affecting you. But that noise is your healing right now. You are healed by the name of Jesus. I break the chains, I break the chains, I break the chains, I break the chains in the name of Jesus. God bless you and we love you so much. Let everybody surrender to Jesus now and make this confession. Kalabashata. Say, "Father."
Father.
"I know."
I know.
"I'm a sinner."
I'm a sinner.
"Sometimes."
Sometimes.
"I sinned."
I sinned.
"Knowingly."
Knowingly.
"Sometimes."
Sometimes.
"I sinned."
I sinned.
"Unknowingly."
Unknowingly.
"But forgive me."
But forgive.
"I want to accept."
I want to accept.
"The Lord Jesus."
The Lord Jesus.
"As my personal Savior." "Help me."
Help me.
"Not to sin again."
Not to sin again.
"And follow your ways."
And follow your ways.
"From today."
From today.
"And forever."
And forever.
"In Jesus' mighty name."[1724.33] in Jesus mighty name." All right, we love you all. This is the end of our service. Let's meet tomorrow. And before I forget, Friday is gonna be a serious six-hour prayer. By this time, we'll be starting because it will be just two hours. We are going to finish around 2:00 AM as the Lord is leading. And we'll be broadcasting live from this platform. Do I have people are ready for this? Comment section, are you ready?
Amen.
Six hours of prayer non-stop. Jesus, JPN is gonna raise army generals of the kingdom of God. Trust me. So all those people are around. It's a normal church service. I want people to come to church. Let's come to church. Those who are far are the ones who shall stream online. But everyone, let's come to church. It's a normal prayer day that we are expecting all the members of JAM to come to church. God bless you, shalom.